Everybody's here, right? All right, we'll call the meeting of the City Council and order and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. All the council people are present and here and ready to go, burning up in this place. But if you'll stand, our Hightower ROTC is gonna lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Post our colors.
Color guard. Attention. Can't read colors. Forward, arms. Left, 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 right. Left, arms. Color guard.
Very good, thank you.
Make it.
Okay, Barbara, come on up. Bill's gonna read some nice things about you here in a minute, but anyway, we just wanna recognize Barbara Breschen tonight. Again, we did it earlier with the employees, had a kind of a going-away party for her up here, but Barbara has decided to retire from the city. And, you know, let me just say that when we got Barbara, how long has it been now?
Almost five.
Almost five years ago. You know, we were going through a period of time where we were trying to get ourselves identified and hired a firm to come up with the logo and the logo of, you know, the show-me city and all that stuff, and Barbara helped us get through all of that and has suffered through those pains and aches. But let me just say that I think that Missouri City is on the map today much better than it was before Barbara got here because of the work that Barbara and her team has done to make sure that, you know, we have things in the newspapers, we are on the news, we still don't have the weather on Channel 13, and we'll burn the Doppler down if they forget that they promised that. So Stacy, that's your chore, okay? They committed to us right here, in front of Barbara and everybody else, that if we allowed that Doppler radar to be built over there off of Beltway 8, that Missouri City would be on the weather map, okay? That Doppler radar's not in Sugar Land, never was in Sugar Land, okay? But anyway, that's another story, right Barbara? Barbara fought that battle too. But let me just say, on behalf of myself and the rest of the council, and things speak for themselves, and the citizens of Missouri City, Barbara, that we appreciate the time, the hours that you've spent devoting yourself to getting us to where we are today, and, you know, I think people don't realize that, you know, the communications piece of the city is vital to the citizens, and trying to keep them informed through our MCTV, through newspapers, is not an easy chore sometimes. And I know that a lot of times when the press is calling for me for quotes, I just say, Barbara, come up with something, I know you know what I wanna say, and it keeps me out of trouble. Right, Edward, keeps me out of the legal side of it. But Barbara, on behalf of us, we just wanna say thank you, and I know Bill's got some nice comments that he wants to make, and then it'll be the clock and Glock time again.
Mayor, I worked real hard on this, and you've already covered everything I was gonna say. No, actually, I was gonna say that, I've been thinking about it, and actually Barbara and I were talking a few weeks ago before she left for Europe, just got back from Europe and started her retirement off correctly, so she and her husband, John, just got back and joined us tonight, and we appreciate that. But I told her the other night that the highest compliment that one can be given in respect to their job is that they left the position better than they found it, and you did that. And as the mayor pointed out, you did that very well. You raised that bar for us, and you put us on the map, literally, so I do appreciate it, and you're gonna make a, you left a great foundation for your successor, and I thank you for that, and we will miss you. So, I thank you for everything you've done, and it was four years, 10 months, by the way.
Thank you, Bill. I really wanna thank Bill, and especially Mayor Owen and all of City Council, who approved my appointment those many years ago, almost five. I really appreciate the opportunity to work here, it's just been a wonderful, wonderful experience for me. I've seen so much economic growth, we've had so many achievements, so many of the departments have had some outstanding state and national achievements, and it's been wonderful to be a part of all that. But as I've said, there's a time, finally, to spend, you need a little bit more time with family and friends, and that time has come. So it's, I really am sad to be gone. I had a little lump in my throat when I came in the lobby last night, tonight, and I realized that I was a visitor and no longer an employee, but thank you all for the wonderful opportunity. I really, really, really appreciate it very, very much.
Stacy, those other two months, I'd have put batteries in here for you.
I hope you're watching for this somewhere?
Yes, sir.
Oh, there it is, okay, hopefully the battery's in there. Come on, thank you. Absolutely. Go get the batteries. Mayor, members of council, we're also here tonight to recognize Shane Myes for receiving a National Recreation and Park Association, the NRPA Rising Professional Award. Shane, come on up. Shane, along with 18 other regional winners, competed for the 2012 National Young Professional of the Year Award during the NRPA's National Congress in October. Shane is the 2012 recipient of this national award. The prestigious Robert W. Crawford Rising Professional National Award is given to a Parks and Rec professional 35 years old or younger who demonstrates the qualities and skills needed to attain positions of leadership of their field through participation in professional organizations such as the NRPA, their contributions to advancing the field, and their creativity in creating or managing programs. And as I've said in the past, the City, Missouri City, is very fortunate to have Shane on staff to head the Recreation Division. Shane's creative, he's a hard worker, and he inspires his staff to do the same. Please join me in congratulating the winner of the Robert W. Crawford 2012 Rising Professional Award, Shane Myes.
I thought he was 36.
Way to go, Shane.
Good job.
Purple shirt.
I like that shirt.
Yeah, I know.
All right, we'll get back to the regular agenda. Item four, public comments, I did not have anyone sign up for public comments. Item five is staff reports. Five A is a presentation of the quarterly investment report for the period ending September 30th, 2012. Wes will present that. I know with the bond rates being so high, we've done so well.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Good evening, Mayor and council. This staff report is on the quarterly investment report for the period ending September 30th. As you can see on the second frame, that's not working. All right. This report is required by state law, it's through the Public Funds Investment Act and our investment policy. It's also demonstrates our compliance with the city's investment policy, that is why we prepare it and compare, and prepare it. This screen is a summary in which it shows bank deposits, it's $2.6 million. We have $4.6 million in our investment pools, tax pool and logic, and we have a little bit of money in CDs to cover small commitments we have, and the majority is in, 44 million is agency notes, for a total of $51,405. The next screen shows portfolio composition by type. The yellow, the yellow is the agencies, that's the biggest part of it. The only thing I would show from this, from, this is a 30-month period of time, and so it, it's dropped down in the amount of agencies that we have somewhat, and it kinda comes and goes on the pools. That's mainly because we use that for liquid cash. The next page is the balance comparisons as of the last quarter, the ending June 30th and September 30th, the change in the bank amount of cash was $188,000 negative, that means we used, pulled that much down, but overall, we used $6.8 million out of all the funds that we had, mainly to pay bills. We're sitting at September, so we have October, November, December, January before we start getting taxes.
Wes, on the, on the bank deposits, you're monitoring the pledge from the bank against those deposits, are you not?
Yes, yes.
And remember that in January, the FDIC insurance changes.
In January?
Yeah.
To?
Back down.
It goes back down. Well, this is, yeah, these are secure.
Make sure of that.
We'll do, thank you.
Are we 100% covered on our?
102.
102, okay. So we're okay regardless of what, you're talking about 102% of the total balances?
Right, right.
So that would cover our CDs as well, so, and, okay.
Okay. Could be even 103, but I know it's at least 102.
And I, for the, I know I may be speaking for the banking side of it, but for the guys that are up here, because they're municipal funds and sitting in a bank, the city, cities require that those deposits be fully covered by securities, so that there is no risk of a bank failure and us losing our deposits. So what he's saying is that 102% of our deposits, or, I mean, that are, what's covered is 102% of the total deposits, and that has to be monitored because as those deposits rise during tax collection time, when our balances are at highest, you have to stay on top of that.
Those go directly to our investment pools.
Yeah, so, but anyway, that's, I just wanted to make sure of that, because FDIC insurance changes in January.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yield to maturity type, by type, this, pretty much as you can see, it's all in agencies, but the light blue purple shows the change over the years of the amount of agencies, and, or, excuse me, the amount of, rate of interest that we get out of agencies compared to everything else. They're a little longer term, but they pay the rate. This, this slide is the trend, and over the 30-month period of time, you can see that how it fluctuates and where we are today, right at 3.75%. And then our benchmark down at the bottom, our benchmark for, in the investment policy is, is the 90-day T. He bill.
Is tax pools primary investments now in agencies as well?
Yes, I believe they are. I'd have to double-check, I couldn't say.
I would assume they're not in S&amp;P 500 stuff like they have been in the past, if they've been.
I believe that's right. Logic is not, they have some, some commercial paper.
S&amp;P, yeah, okay.
Wes, I just wanna go back for a minute, just to make sure I understand.
Yes, sir.
We about to embark upon our, the height of our tax collection season.
December and January.
And what the mayor was saying is that banks are required to, to secure our deposits up to 102%.
Well, I think, what are you, right.
Okay, so what you're, and he said, be sure that we keep an eye on that, and you said that it goes directly to.
Two different things. He was, then he's kinda switched a little bit on me to our tax deposits. Tax deposits go straight in to our investment pools, not the bank.
Okay, all right, I'm, I'm clear.
They don't go through the bank?
It's a joy to comprehend.
They never touch the bank? No pass-through.
Maturity schedule, this shows, you know, what the majority of things mature in about six months, six months to a year, what that shows. And the outlook is the City, Missouri City is outperforming the 90-day T-bill by 3, 3633 basis points, or 3.75 versus 1.1167. Aggressive central bank actions and modest economic growth will continue to keep global rates low and with, with tail risk, or tail, not sure what that means, volatility lower as well. Central banks now appear to have done what they can, and the onus for generating the economic recovery has shifted to fiscal policy. It is clear that inflation targeting has given way to growth generation over the intermediate horizon. While the downside risks have been mitigated, the upside of the economy has not materially improved. The Fed also extended its interest, low interest rate guidance to mid-2015 from late 2014, and stated that it will continue its existing policy known as Operation Twist until December 12th, 2012. One of the most interesting parts of the Fed statement was the commitment to remain accommodative even after the economic recovery strengthens.
And the outcome of the cliff.
That's all I have. Questions?
All right, good job. Out of the economy. Any questions, Wes? All right, we have the presentation of the 2012 Charter Review Commission.
Good evening, Mayor and council. It was my privilege over the past few months to work with the 2012 Charter Review Commission as the staff contact. This presentation on the 2012 Charter Review Commission report is actually more of a first step for council consideration. This item will be brought back to City Council at a later date for you to act upon that item, as well as for you to formally receive the report. At this time, the Charter Review Commission Chairman, Joe Workman, will just present some highlights from the report. So if I may introduce Chairman Workman.
And Joe, on behalf of myself and I know the rest of the council, thank you and the Commissioner's time for spending those long hours going over this stuff, and you never get to say thank you, so thank you for, for your service.
You're quite welcome. Actually, it was our pleasure to serve, looking at this very important document, and I was just thinking here, I always love following financial reports, no matter what I say, it's gotta be more exciting. Before I get started, I really do wanna thank the other members of the commission for their wisdom and discussion. We did go through each of the points and had quite lively discussion. I really wanna thank E. Joyce for her guidance and direction in bringing these items to our attention and explaining those things that were a little bit above some of our This is the final report of the 2012 Charter Review Commission. As E. Joyce said, I think there's a workshop next, at your next council meeting, I'd be happy to sit there and discuss any of these things in detail, any items in detail, or if you have any questions tonight, we can, I try to address them here. I think you have a packet there. The first proposition found on pages two through eight of the, of the report, really are the restatement, or elimination of a lot of references to state law that have changed and are no longer appropriate, or sometimes things that were restated in the charter, state law that was restated in the charter, such as the oath of office that's been changed is no longer appropriate. I think there, there's a comment here, some of the pros and cons of making these changes that, without having state law embodied in the charter, that people coming to look at the charter to make certain decisions about what should be done, have to go elsewhere to look at it. Well, I would make the counter-comment, as state law changes, the charter doesn't get changed that often, and while the city follows state law, you can't always read the charter and figure out what's going on either, so you always have to go to state law to make sure you're looking at the right thing. I personally would make a suggestion that maybe the city would like to consider having a side document, if you will, a policy or procedure that addresses those maybe four, five, half a dozen items that the public would come up and ask frequently, what are the, what are the filing deadlines, what are the, how long do I have to do this or that? And that can be changed without council or an election, and it could be kept up to date, and people would know really what's going on without having to go by state law. Propositions two through 15, found on page eight through 21, really are changes based on recent Attorney General's opinions, our court rulings, changes in the organization structure of the, of the council, of the city, additional positions that the city might need, such as assistant city manager, assistant city attorney, assistant city secretaries, and just changes in policies and procedures of the city that need to be addressed. So there, there are about 14 of those. The last two pages of this report really have five items that we chose not to make a recommendation to, to change. Some of them were brought by the city staff, and some were brought by the public that came and asked us to change certain parts of the, the charter. So that, that is the report. I think in your packet, you also have a list of the wording for the, each of the propositions. Those would be stated as a yes or no, shall, shall this section be changed, yes or no? And I think that pretty well takes care of it. If anybody has any other questions, be happy to.
So you might mention who the other members were.
Oh, absolutely. Robert Burton, Albert Glover, Eunice Ryder, Scott Mosley, and Buddy Jimmerson, and we really do appreciate their, their work, hard work, long work.
And for the general public, those names may be familiar to you because they're all former council people.
Right.
Who should know the charter better than anybody, and that's why we appoint those people to serve on that commission.
I think it is important, because there, there really is a lot, lot to understand the way it's written.
Unless you've sat up here, you may not understand that as well, right Scott?
Probably would.
When I tell you, y'all did a very, very good job.
They did.
Thank you. You know, I, I'd like to make a personal plea to the, to this council. This is my third time serving on Charter Review Commission. I can't remember the, the exact order, but I think the first time, there wasn't going to be a city election of, of anyone, so the council decided not to hold an election just for the charter. I think the next time, I forget what, what the reason was, it, they just didn't wanna do it. And this, we have got so many items now that I really encourage the city to strongly, and the council to strongly have a, an election.
Yeah.
I think the charter is really out of date quite a bit, and it needs to be brought into, into.
And, and everything that you all did here is new state stuff, anyway, and it needs to be added, so we're not cleaning it up as often as.
Right, and for the benefit of the public, in case they don't know, the city does follow the state law regardless of what the charter says, and that's the reason the charter is so out of date, because you're following state law, but not really what's in, in the charter.
Very good, thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
First of all, thank you, I appreciate it. The items that you talked about, you said, we're not making any changes, what pages were they on?
The last two pages, there are five items.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
They're, they're on pages 22 and 23. One was talking about city manager, his ability to, or her ability to appoint certain, certain staff people by themselves. We thought that ought to come back to the council. And then the other four items were having term limits, having a different time period when, when elections were held, possibly going to November instead of the May date, and, I forget what the third one was. Those, those were the, the main items. Oh, I know, it was changing the, the number of districts.
When is the workshop scheduled?
Changing, changing the number of districts. And I think.
We have a workshop scheduled for this, don't we?
Yes, we'll be doing a work session at your next regular meeting, or your next special meeting, and then follow that either at the second meeting in December, or depending on how much more you have, much more you wanna continue discussion on it, eventually some type of resolution on acceptance of the report.
So then have it be on the ballot in May.
I think with that, that workshop, we should have a formal acceptance of this report from the Charter Review Commission.
Yeah.
We can do that.
Well, we, we really should.
No, we can, we will.
But again, this is so that we can get it on the ballot in May, of 2013.
Joe.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Don.
I was just saying, Joe, thank you.
You're welcome. You and your group. Joe, again, I wanna thank you and the rest of the, of the committee. I attended a couple of those, of the review meetings, and really didn't see any real active participation from, from the city residents. In fact, when I was there, I think there was just one person. I mean, was that pretty indicative of all of the meetings?
We, I think the first meeting, there, I can't remember the exact order, one meeting there, we're about three, three or four people there, and then there weren't, there wasn't anyone there for a couple of meetings, and then I think one person showed up.
Kind of a boring subject for them.
Well, well, the night that, the night that the city put on the Roberts Rules of Order, we had a meeting scheduled for that night, it had actually been called earlier, an hour early, and so just to make sure that people didn't misunderstand the time of the meeting, we actually recessed for about 30 minutes to get to the seven o'clock hour, and no one, still no one showed up.
Because we did have some comments, I think, didn't we, from several people in, in public initially, and then that was, they made their, their plea, and after that, that was the end of it?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Joe.
Yeah, Joe, I attended some of your meetings, too, and I wanna thank you and the entire commission, please pass that along to all the other members.
Good, thank you. Item six is a consent agenda, is our motion to approve the consent agenda, is written.
Mayor, if I may, oh, did Joe get you a second?
Second.
If I may, on the consent agenda, you'll notice as far as the change in the format, where we're having the second reading of ordinances, that have not seen any changes to them after the first reading included with the consent agenda.
Appreciate it.
Very good. There's a motion, and a second, all those in favor, motion carries. Item seven are public hearings and related actions. Seven A are hearings and ordinance, there are none. Seven B are public hearings, there are none. Item eight are appointments. Item eight A is considered appointments to the tax increment reinvestment zone number three, board of directors.
Mayor and City Council, there are currently three board members on the city's tax increment reinvestment zone number three board, whose term will expire on December 3rd. Those three people are Albert Glover, Buddy Jimmerson, and Joe Workman. All three board members have been contacted and agreed to serve against your council's wish to reappoint them. This would be for two years, their expiration would be December 3rd, 2012 to December 3rd, 2014.
There a motion?
I make a motion. Set those.
Second.
Councilman Emery made the motion, Mayor Pro Tim White made the second.
Yes, I, I do wanna say something. I do think in the future, staff need to let us know that there are going to be appointments before you call anybody, just in case we maybe wanna do something different.
Yeah.
I mean, I appreciate it, but, but, but we, but anytime we have these appointments, we need to be told that the appointments are coming up, or that, and, and then if we have other, other people, then we can consider them. Before you even call and ask them, we didn't wanna.
Yeah, we can appoint them and then ask them if they're willing to serve.
I thought, I thought we were doing that for all. I thought we were doing that for all.
Item six is a consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as written?
Mayor, if I may, oh, did Joe get your second?
Second.
If I may, on the consent agenda, you'll notice as far as a change in the format where we're having the second reading of ordinances that have not seen any changes to them after the first reading included with the consent agenda.
Appreciate that.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion carries. Item seven are public hearings and related actions. Seven A are hearings and ordinance, there are none. Seven B are public hearings, there are none. Item eight are appointments. Item eight A is consider appointments to the tax increment reinvestment zone number three, board of directors.
May I say to the council, there are currently three board members on the city's tax increment reinvestment zone number three board whose term will expire on December third. Those three people are Albert Glover, Buddy Jimmerson, and Joe Workman. All three board members have been contacted and agreed to serve against your council wish to reappoint them. This would be for two years, their expiration would be December third, 2012 to December third, 2014.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion. Set those.
Second.
Councilman Emery made the motion. Mayor Proton Wyatt made the second.
Yes, I, I do want to say something. I, I do think in the future, staff need to let us know that there are going to be appointments before you call anybody, just in case we maybe want to do something different.
Yeah.
I mean, I appreciate it, but, uh, but, uh, but we, but anytime we have these appointments, we need to be told that appointments are coming up or that, and, and then if we have other, other people, then we can consider them before you even call and ask them. We didn't want to-
Yeah, we can appoint them and then ask them if they're willing to serve.
I thought, I thought we were doing that for all. I thought we were doing that for all.
No. I'm not, what I'm basically saying is, is that if I wanted to change tonight, we've already asked these people if they still want to, to, to serve, even though I don't intend to change from these three, but there could be an occasion that we may want to appoint somebody different.
But I think Maria says, "If appointed, if reappointed, would you be willing to serve?"
We normally send an email out, um, about a month or a month and a half before appointments are up to council just to let you know, hey, you know, um, you know, these are the current board members whose term will expire. I think this time it was in the middle of October, um, we sent an email out to council.
We got one, yes.
We probably got one. I probably missed it, but I still-
Yeah, she sent it out.
Yeah, we normally do and to all of our boards, even the, uh, the ones that-
But we're doing that before we contact anyone.
Right. We email council first always.
Yeah. You still all right with your second?
I don't have a problem with these people. I just want to make sure. Somebody want to do something different, that we don't go ask people and then have a big debate over who's going to be on there and-
You're right. That's why she sends that out early, so we just probably need to read it.
Make my page red.
Yeah, put red. Jerry, did you see this? All right. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item B is consider approving the appointment of the chair of the board of directors of tax increment zone number three for a one-year term. I know that went out.
Yeah, our ordinance requires that we appoint a chairman person to the TERS three board annually. Ron Lee has served on the board since it was created in 2007 and he was contacted again. He would like to serve again should council wish to reappoint him.
So is there a motion?
I, um, Ron, I want to say this. I respect you very much. I come to you for advice. I, uh, I, uh, I thank you, an asset to the city. I see you on chairing all the TERS, P and Z, and, 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 and other major boards. And that's a, uh, that's a major undertaking and you're doing a good job. There's so much talent that I see in this great city that I would like to see, um, some opportunities there without diluting any effort that you, you put forth, none whatsoever. And I'm probably the only idiot that's going to get up here and say this. But, um, you, you, you the chair of most of the TERS, if somebody correct me if I'm wrong, the P and Z and, and maybe some other. And I hope that I not insulted you in any way. But what I'm suggesting to my colleagues is give other citizens of Missouri City who has skills, maybe not quite as, as prominent as yours, but an opportunity to serve on some of these, on some of these boards.
So can I, you know, Don?
By the way, what, what have we done to create this, the awareness of these opportunities to our citizens? I mean, do we post on MCTV?
Normally what we do is, uh, I, there, there is an application online for people to submit an application online to me if they're interested in serving on any board. Normally what I do when I get those applications is we send an, I send them directly to council. I have worked with communications in the past, but recently we haven't received that many requests from citizens wishing to serve on the board.
These are pointed by council.
No, no, but at the same time, I think, I think what, what council member Wynn was talking about, you know, there, there were smaller areas that I've seen before on newsletters. If anyone wishes to serve, contact, uh, board or commissioner or anything like that. I've seen it before. But I, I guess, you know, to going back to council member Smith, what Mayor Proton Wyatt was talking about, the same thing that, uh, the, the, the exact item prior to this is that, uh, was this brought up, Maria, in the, in the, in the back where we can discuss or before these appointments were fully given the opportunity to reappoint someone?
You mean an exec session or, or it's like a special, just an item on the special?
So we don't have these type of discussions out here versus that? That's what I'm asking.
Let, let me reiterate because, because I-
We didn't have an exec session or an, an item on the special agenda. We sent an email to council asking your opinion as to whether you want us to contact these individuals, see if they would be willing to serve again. Um, we didn't receive that much feedback, so we decided it was, uh, it was council's decision to move forward and reappoint these individuals.
You know, at the, at the, at the Texas Municipal Council, the meeting we just came from, that was a real cute, um, uh, uh, thing, cartoon where this kid was showing his dad how to use the computer, you know, and he was doing, he was going like lickety-split, you know? And, uh, but this kind of, you know, we going to point Ron. I, I, I hope that's what we going to do. But, but, but this kind of goes back to my last comment, okay? All of us don't get the emails, not that we don't really, really get them. I, I think we need to not rely on just email communication when these things are up. We need to formally tell council in a meeting that these are things going, and I think that plus, and if you follow up with emails, will be, will be better. No fault of yours. You did what you, we asked you to do, okay? And, uh, and, uh, but I think, I think this would be more helpful than we know verbally and if we want to do something different, then we can give instructions on that.
Well, council member Wyatt, let me add one more thing. The way we have it today, that at, at some point to Maria's justification, that the way we have it, the person who's currently serving, if they're up for return, we ask them.
No, that's not what I'm-
We ask them if they want to re, if they want to re-serve and if, if it, if that person says yes, then the council gets back and, and, and appoint that person. There is nowhere in here prior to it saying that if anyone on any board or any commission is being, their terms being expired, we collectively sit back and talk about, going back to what council member Smith was talking about, we go back and sit and talk about saying, okay, are these people going to, what, from what I've heard in my council district seats, the positions that we had, uh, the discussion that I had, I may be wrong, but the discussions that I can, you know, conclude is that we ask the people automatically if they want to be re-served on this board or whatever the board or commission is. And if they say yes, and then we go, a majority of the council, we go back to appointing.
I, I, I understand, but, but, uh, please understand, Maria did what we told her to do, okay? My comment is, is that I, I really think we need to be told that we got some appointments that are going to be coming up, okay, versus the email. We need to be told so we can avoid this kind of situation.
Okay, I guess in the future, if we don't hear from you, we'll call you.
Yeah, cause going back to, Robin, to, go back to your point, she sent this out two months ago.
October sixteenth.
Saying, no, 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 Don, hold on. Saying, "These appointments are coming up for appointment. Do you have any suggestions or anything?"
Right.
If she doesn't hear back-
Right.
Then her next email to you is, "I haven't heard back from anybody. I assume everything is okay and I'm moving forward and asking these people if they're willing to serve." There is a second chance for you to say no.
Sure. So- No, no, my, my question wasn't Jerry's. Jerry's questions was the email. My question was similar to what Don Smith was talking about, is the fact that he said, you know, we had one commission board person has served on several TERS and he wanted to change it up. And, and what I'm going back to is if that's what the majority of the council is wanting to do, then we should take that up and back and then discuss it rather than saying, "We appoint you."
And the other thing that I, maybe I'd suggest that you do, Maria, and I think that's out there, just send all the council people a list of all the people that are serving on all commissions with their expiration date of their term.
Let, let me-
Have that on hand.
Well, but, but I'm- Give me a minute, give me a chance. Cause I, cause I don't want this conversation to sway away from the point that I was trying to make and, and we've, we've off, we skewed a little bit here. Is I want to have the same opportunity to recommend, this is important, Jerry, you need to listen to me on this one. I, I, I want the, I think that it's important for, for citizens in all district to have the same opportunity to, to move up on that, on that ladder, that governor's ladder that's, that's out here with Missouri City. I'm not trying to isolate anybody in this unfortunate we have in this conversation, but I, but, but I've been holding back for a couple of years on this, on this thing. We should give everybody an opportunity who wanted to serve. And also we should set some sort of atmosphere that if you really want to work hard and if you really want to be a part of Missouri City's business, then that, those opportunities are out there. And when you see the same people, same people, then that doesn't portray that type of atmosphere.
To answer that, that's, that's the point, council member Smith. What I was saying was, the way today we have it, we go back and ask those board members or commission members if, when their term's up, if, if they would like to serve again. And if they say yes, then that's how it, that's how it moves.
And you all are asking your own people.
Right. So what, so what I'm hearing different to, I'm not trying to change your conversation, is if we want to see new people on all levels, whoever appoints them, doesn't matter who it is, then we need to be, instead of having the city secretary send them a letter saying that you want to be serving again and then we go back, maybe we should not do that. That was my point.
You're right.
That's all I'm trying to say.
And we've gotten to a point now where most of those boards and commissions, each of you are represented on that, on those boards and commissions by people out of your district. Well, but not, yeah, not the TERS, but the others. And if you don't feel like, you know, if you want some new people to move up, I suggest you replace the people that you have. That's your choice.
But we, if we go back and dissect each individual and, and who were there, Mayor, that might hold true and then it might not, because I've studied it pretty good. And, 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 and we are talking about positions of, of chair and that kind of thing. I would love to have, uh, somebody who really wants to, to work hard and be a part of this to be tutored by Ron, to, to sit under his-
They need to be on that, they need to be on that TERS board first.
I got that. I'm not, how did I suggest that they shouldn't be on the board?
Well, I'm just saying-
We shouldn't throw these kind of little insertions out there because all that does is just confuse the issue.
Now, but you're saying that, right?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying that what we should do is have, create an atmosphere that there are other folks can chair some of these committees.
I understand that, but I'm saying, I'm asking you, are you asking them to get on those boards first?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay.
Absolutely. That goes without saying.
Okay.
Ed, I have a suggestion. Would you please make an extra effort to utilize our existing media means, which we have plenty? TV, radio, website, newspaper, newsletters? Can you please make sure that you use those to create awareness so people are aware of the opportunities and the requirements so they, they, they will apply for the position? Maybe they, they ask Mr. Ron Lee to be his mentee.
Well, in, in essence, that, that, uh, let me, let me go back to what I was originally talking about, okay? Part of the problem is we don't talk to each other anymore. We email and we send stuff out. What happens if you get an email and that, uh, uh, three of us say no? What do you do? Huh? We don't talk to each other. We can have these discussions before you ever make the telephone call to say, and we need to do it with, we need to take those committees serious and we need to do it with each one. If somebody want to say, I'd like to have somebody else, that happens at another discussion, the ones that are left that we ask to call and then somebody will call in at the person or they're not being reappointed, okay? Emails are great in one sense, okay? But they don't serve us well when we have to really, really do the business. And all I'm saying, I'm not saying you did anything wrong, Maria, please understand. Well, I'm saying to council, we need to say, tell us when that's going to happen so we can have that discussion and each time we direct you to re-contact somebody, let's not make it a carte blanche thing and it just happens every time.
Well, part of the problem too is that we get an email that tells us something like this and more than three of us can't respond to it because it violates-
That's no point. I don't respond to the emails.
We can't respond to these things in force.
And may, and then maybe that's something I think that the council, not the email issue, but to take it back even further, there's a disagreement on the council, I think, in regards, or there has been tension in pretty much every appointment in relation to what is the direction about the appointments. And that's something we can schedule a work session for the council to start to develop a policy towards and process on how do you want to handle the appointment process. And because it's one to where a TERS board, let's face it, the TERS board is not sexy. It's TERS board doesn't, you'll have to go out and recruit for TERS boards. Not the same for planning and zoning and parks board and the like. You will, should have people-
Five of those members we don't even appoint.
That's true. But it is one to where the appointment process in of itself, I think, is something that the council needs to spend more time than just this piece right here on, and we can work on scheduling something for y'all and at a later meeting to handle that discussion and try to come up with a policy on and procedures on how do you want to handle the appointment process.
This is bureaucracy at its finest, man. We just had a lot of dialogue about just embracing somebody and say, hey, come on, boy, let's-
But, but the point of it is, Don, I didn't respond to the email, okay? Cause I want to go have a meeting.
But I'm not, I'm not, I'm not just, I'm not, I'm not arguing that point, Jerry, but, but, you know, but I'm also looking at, you know, five years from now, you wouldn't think you'd be communicating with your two thumbs now, man. Everybody does it now.
Well, you know, Chief Justice Roberts, I heard him on the TV program talking about one of the biggest challenges to the Supreme Court today is how you interpret the Constitution to match all this new technology that we are confronted with. So I mean, so what we're talking about is happening everywhere. It's not just happening in Missouri City.
But here we, here we just trying to get somebody, some new people on, you know, run, chair, as a chair, that's all. We'll lead the Supreme Court to that business.
I think if we had met about that early, Don, we would have probably been able to do that. That's all I'm saying.
So Ed, just, just from my understanding, so what council member Wynn had talked about the newsletter and media and all that, so that'd be part of this policy?
It will be, but remember, I, I advertise we're looking for TERS board members, I still don't get TERS board members. That, that takes recruitment from council members and staff to go out there and find people for these. Now, P and Z and Parks Board, I, I can, I can get you, bring in people from P and Z and Parks Board. TERSs and, you know, some of the other ones, um, that people just either don't understand or-
And never meet.
Just, yeah, just hardly meet. They're not going to, they're not going to come meeting out the door.
Right. But, and I'm not trying to put words in council member Smith's mouth, but what, from what I, what I understood from him was not just TERS or is it you were talking about just TERS board or appointing of any or all boards, commissions?
My original statement, I think, is if you look, I'm going to rephrase it. If you look back and, and see who actually are chairing these, these boards, it's the same people.
Various, all of them.
Category, same people.
Okay.
Well, Ed, I mean, the problem I have, and even though I made the motion on this, my problem is, is that we're going right from, straight from eight B to, I mean, eight A to eight B in the same meeting where we just appointed three of the six members that we have any authority over. It seems to me there should be a break between the, the TERS committee being appointed to know who the eleven positions are and then take the next step and make a chairman for that group. Find out, find out who on that board wants the position. We know one wants the position, but we have no idea who else might want the position. But we, and we have no time here to ask because we just appointed three of them to the board two minutes ago.
Well, no, that, that-
I recommend that we go ahead on and, and act on, on this appointment.
I'm not arguing with that, but I'm saying, but there should be some gap between making a board and making the chairman of the board.
Each, each TERS board could have its own chairman.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I mean, but that's another conversation, that's what Ed is talking. We need to discuss that in, 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 at a different time, so.
I know, but I'm talking about the process of making the board and then making the chair of the board. Should be separated by more than five minutes.
But to talk about how the council members are going to attract different people, if we're going to say that we're going to have Maria as a city secretary, ask the people who are currently serving if they want to serve again, then you're not really going out there finding people to serve because-
But that goes back to the process that you as the council need to define in which-
That's what I was saying.
With the, the selection of the chairman, that's, it's, that's something, that's, that's more definitive than where you are now. now.
Right.
Where you are now is a question of the selection of the chairman of the 11 members that you have.
Right.
And that, and that's been the common practice, is, is, as far as the organization of, of the reorganization of the TERS board after the appointment process. If council wants to change that, again, can be part of the discussion.
Does the TERS regulation state that the council will name the chairman?
It does, and actually, the, there are timeframes in each of the TERS ordinances and in statute, so it would involve staff bringing these items to you earlier in order to comport with those timeframes.
I'm sure glad you said that, because historically, that's what we've been doing.
Yeah.
Well, I, I mean, the TERS is our board, and I know we don't control the other five, but we better be looking at the other five members as well.
I don't agree, I don't disagree.
And go into the county, I mean, at the last one on the, on this particular TERS board, the college did, no, it was the school, Corbin ISD, didn't even have anybody. They didn't have a soul they even wanted to nominate. We fill their position with Sharon, Dureka. The college has one, that's Nita Sani. The county has two. Corbin County has.
Range District.
The Range District has one, yes.
That's worst case scenario, though, Mayor. We, we, we got good people here.
Well, I know. But after good people that the county could appoint, that would serve us better than one who's not attending any meetings.
Let me say one more thing, because I want to make sure this is clear. The, the person that chair these is, is doing this as a byproduct of how the careers were created and how they came about. There was no strategy, no plan, or what have you. It's just that somebody had some experience, and they worked with the newest TERS that came along, they worked with the next TERS that came along. That's how it happened, okay? Now, if we want to change that, then we do what Ed is asking us to do, to come up with a strategy for how we want to change that. But it only came out of by coincidence, of one person having, already having experience to work with these, these groups, so there was no intention in terms of how that person arrived in that position. And that's the absolute truth. Now, that don't mean that we can't change it, but I'm just giving you the history behind it.
Well, we're bringing up all this stuff, this sidebars, and, but, but, all we trying to do is say, hey, we got some new, we got some new blood here.
I don't agree with you, but I think you need to understand how it occurred in order to appreciate what happened.
Jerry, it's a joy to comprehend, man, and every now and then I do that. I understand. I understood it from the beginning.
Well, I put it more plainly. Ron is doing that because we asked him to do that, because he started with one TERS, and his experience helped us with another one. Only because, only because we asked him. Now, if we want to change, that's okay, I don't have a problem with that. But let's appreciate the fact of what has happened so far.
You, you obviously didn't hear everything I said.
I heard you very clear, Don, you were irritating.
Well, I'm going to do it, I'm going to say it to you again, so you won't distort it. What we have here, if you look at a total picture of what our, of most of the committees that we have here, they're the same people, they're the same.
I disagree with you.
Let me, let me finish, let me finish. I don't, I don't want you to go through some histrionics to try to sway this to another way, Jerry, I don't want you to do that. The other thing is, is we got talented people out here, and we got talented people out here, constituents that we serve. People who we say that Missouri City is a good place to live, and a good place to get involved in. But when they see this, this, this ascending ladder, as far as committees are concerned, and they see that overall, it's everybody, they're the same people.
Then why didn't you say something about it before tonight, Don?
Again, my greatest, my greatest fear is that you're going to interrupt me before I make a point.
Why didn't you say something about it before tonight?
Give me the courtesy, let me finish.
Why didn't you say something about it before tonight?
I listened to you. So, as I was saying, as I was saying, the only thing, the only thing that I'm trying to do, only thing I'm trying to say, is that let other people come in and serve the city. They can do it, we got talented folks out there.
Don, I don't disagree with you. I think my whole point back to what I said to Maria is consistent with what you're saying, but I did want you to know, I don't want Ron to feel like he's unappreciated, because he did it because of the time. That's not what I'm saying, because of the timing by which these came about. Now, the fault of that is not his, it's ours, if that's the case.
Let the records reflect that. I went to great pain to, to mention to, to Ron Lee that I, I respect what he's done, and I, and I, and I really appreciate what he's done. I go to Ron. And I don't want anyone to make him feel that I didn't do that. Like I said, you mustn't hear me when I first started talking.
You did, you made the point.
Eric, I'd like to call a question and reiterate my motion.
All right. There's been a motion, and a second, and a lot of discussion on those in favor. Motion carries. Now.
You're doing a good job.
Item 8C, consider appointments to the Veterans Memorial Committee.
Another committee.
Mayor and council, the council is being asked to consider appointing members to the Veterans Memorial Committee. As you know, the citizens, citizens committee process has been used successfully in the past to gather citizen input, and to involve citizens in city issues and projects. A Veterans Memorial Work Group has been meeting to discuss the possibility of a memorial in a city park that will honor veterans. The group has discussed possible location, design ideas, and potential fundraising efforts. Members of that work group have been councilmember Don Smith, Scott Mosley, who's here in the audience, Manuel Barnes, Andrew Case, and Matthew Rios. Staff recommends the approval of this work group, members to the Veterans Memorial Committee, and ask you if you have any other suggestions for.
Larry, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
When we talked about this veterans committee, we said this committee was not in place. So today, the name that you read, was any, anything changed?
Those are all the members, are you talking about the members?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I know, at the last meeting, we talked about there was really no committee.
I called it a committee. I shouldn't have been calling it a committee, that was my fault. It was technically a work group, and was never officially appointed by the mayor.
So you're coming back to, with the same people that we had previously, and saying, now.
Do it officially.
Make it official, that's.
I believe that was my direction in the last meeting.
This is what we heard from council. What we had heard from council was to bring back these members, and, yeah, we'd make it official. If there are any additional people that you would want to consider, they can be placed on here now, or at a future date.
Well, the, the item here, unless there's a motion to make it official, doesn't make it official. And the motion should be to approve a veterans committee to, to formulate the plans for a veterans memorial, and that gives them the authorization.
So you wouldn't make the recommendation of the individuals? You're just saying, yeah.
No, we still got the.
Well, I know we have to do that, but it's the motion he's making. He's saying what we should be doing now is, is assigning or giving credence to the committee, but not select those individuals that are named.
No, we can do that in the same motion. But all we're doing is, we're charging them now with coming up with, we're authorizing the memorial.
So when does this, I'm just, so when does this committee get formed?
I thought, I thought you said in the last meeting, the mayor appoints a committee.
Oh, mayor points all committees.
I point all committees.
So what are the, what are these names?
What I said last, what I said last time at the meeting is that there had been no formal recommendation to even form that committee.
So is this?
So, we'll form the committee, and I said at that meeting, Don can chair that from the council, and if you all have suggestions to, to the committee, come up with them, just like you do on the others. Otherwise, appoint those that have been named, and council confirms all committees.
So are all these five people, and moving forward after this, will be a committee?
They would be the Veterans Memorial Committee.
Yes.
Committee.
And as I told, Don, if there are other people that are wanting to serve, that's up to them. That committee can add other members if they feel like they need to, if there's citizens out there that are just jumping for joy to help us raise some money for that. Absolutely, have them come on board.
And this committee will come back and report to the council where they are?
Absolutely. All we're, all they're going, all this committee's doing right now is coming up with some ideas, and working on some, how much money it's going to cost, and I know that at the TML this past meeting, there was some guys there that are very willing to work with the city to come up with it. But we've talked about this for over a year now, and this gets it off of dead center and moving forward, and moving in a positive way to get something done.
Larry, previously, your work group was talking to the Parks Board. Is the intention of this committee to go back through the Parks Board before council, or reporting directly to council?
The, well, the work group was always meeting and then going back to the Park Board.
From this point forward, as a committee.
Okay.
Are you saying that its hierarchy will still go through the Parks Board, and then council, or report directly to council?
It would be my intention to take it to the Park Board first for a recommendation to the council, from the committee to the Park Board, back to council.
It's going to use a park. It's going to want, it's going to use one of our existing parks.
I think so too, I just wanted to, to know if there had been any changes to the.
No, I think they need to work with the park, that committee needs to work in hand with the Parks Board, and then when the, when they come up with some recommendation, I think it needs to come from the Parks Board to council.
So, do you make the, the establishment of this, and does that require us?
Council, council tonight is authorizing the forming of this committee.
Okay.
Yes. Can I make a motion now, Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve these work group members to the Veterans Memorial Committee, so they can formulate a plan.
Okay.
And come back to us.
Second.
All right.
But I guess like Jerry was saying, and to officially give the committee some power, so you specify what the committee's powers are.
First, all we want to do of Veterans Memorial, as a council.
We're not approving the project, we only approve the committee members, so.
Now, what Jerry's saying is, is everybody on board that we're going to move forward in coming up with some kind of veterans memorial?
Yes.
I mean, we got to be there. I mean, you can't go hang yourself out to the public like that.
So what was your question?
That was his question. Are we all on board that we're going to start tonight, formalizing some plans, and we're going to follow through with it to some degree?
Yep.
Okay, and how much money we're going to spend on this?
Well, I think that's yet to even be, yeah, I think we've got a long way before we get there.
There's nothing in the budget.
No, there isn't. And as we all know, we're going to have to go out and talk to our corporate partners and friends and organizations to do that, just like we did for the police memorial.
Okay, I just want, I mean, everybody got scared of that.
For Tony, when we commissioned him, we had to go outside, and that's what those, that's what those bricks are down there for. So yes, I think all of us are on board of trying to work together to come up with a memorial, however we get it.
And so.
Be some state money out there, too.
So your committee is going to come back and tell us, we, I mean, we're going to have a complete program of what it's going to be?
Yes, sir.
Okay? More than where it's going to be located? What kind of memorial it's going to be? What's going to go on the memorial?
Yes, sir. The complete package.
The work, the why, to have the who, the when. The study will be one of the most, will be their first as far as true task that they'll have to go through.
And then we're going to pick fights, right? Then we're going to pick it out. No, no, it's just that, it's just that that's important, I mean, that's, I mean, that's, that's could be pretty near and dear to people's heart, that's why I'm saying that.
Of course.
Yeah. And when that recommendation comes back to us, it'll be our responsibility to accept that, accept that recommendation, tweak it, do more, do less, that's where our responsibility comes in. But I think we're a long way off, I'm seeing that, yet, because there's a lot of work to be done. You never know.
I think, I think it's exciting that we're.
Oh, yeah.
Trying to do this.
And I think, again, I think there's support out there to do it, and.
From, from the work that I saw the city do with the, with some of the projects, recent projects that we've had, I think we can do a lot of things. And we did it in a record-breaking time.
One more question, what's the medium to, for the council to provide additional participants to be considered on the committee?
You need to talk to the chairman, Mr. Smith.
Okay, well then, okay, just so we know what that, what that.
So let me, so. He brought up a good point. So if there are recommendations coming up, does the, does the chair approves it, or it just come back to you, as the mayor?
I'm going to leave that up to.
So the mayor doesn't appoint, this committee, council does.
I only ask because last time.
I'm just trying to make sure you understand, this is a council appointment.
You come to, you come to Don with your recommendations, yeah.
And then Don will recommend it here.
All your responsibility, Don.
No, we, we can all basically agree, if we have somebody we'd like to send, we just have them to get in contact with Don, they don't need to go back and forth.
Just wanted to know the.
The more help they get, the better off they're going to be, they'll manage that.
Well, Jerry, you know I'm not used to being micromanaged, so you keep your distance.
I say you'll manage that.
They said that in your favor.
And a motion and a second, all those in favor? Motion carries. Nine, nine eight. Consider authorizing change order number three for contract number 163-12 for the construction of the Eldorado Bridge.
Move it, Don.
Second.
That's quick. Where are you going, Chris?
So it was 39,000?
Who made the second?
I did.
Danny. And if Danny made the second, don't say nothing.
Motion, yeah, there's been a motion and a second, all those in favor? Motion carries.
Don't introduce anything.
Or we, no, we're about a month ahead, aren't we?
Um, yeah, well, we've lost, you know, that there's 15 days in here. The force main, they're asking for 15 days since they found it, so we're on schedule, but they're asking for it because they've been pushed back 15 days.
Yeah.
So we're still talking about the middle of February, end of?
Yes.
First of March?
Yes.
As a, as a guideline?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I sure am glad that that.
It's a guideline, yeah. No definite.
I'm glad that that power supply on that lift station works, being that it's been disconnected for how long now?
Um, for 15 days.
For the power supply, three months?
Yeah.
Yeah. The neighbors really appreciate that sucker when it comes on and stays on for about four hours, and rattles their house, by the way.
Yeah, well, plans are to be done by the end of next week, if all goes well.
To hook it, to hook the?
To have the force main relocated, to have the electrical moved as well, and to have the alarm pulled out from it, so it should be up and running by the end of next week.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Item 10, ordinance is 10A.
An ordinance granting to BFI Waste Services of Texas LP Delaware Limited Partnership DBA Republic Services of Houston the right privilege and franchise to use the public rights of way to conduct a solid waste collection service business within the city of Missouri City, Texas, providing a term, providing for appeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severability.
This is a second of three readings.
Move it, Don.
Second. And repro tend wide, made the motion, council marshal made the second, all those in favor? Motion carries. Item 10B, David's in the back, if you want to ask him the question.
An ordinance granting to Dependable Disposable Service LLC, a Texas limited liability company the right privilege and franchise to use the public rights of way to conduct a solid waste collection service business within the city of Missouri City, Texas, providing a term, providing for appeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severability.
Move it out.
Second. Councilman Smith made the motion, was it Councilman Ellen Cat?
Yeah. They all jumped on that garbage bin.
All those in favor? Motion carries.[1637.41] Ten C.
An ordinance granting to VF Waste Services, Inc., a Texas corporation, the right privilege and franchise to use the public rights of way to conduct a solid waste collection service business within the city of Missouri City, Texas, providing a term, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, and providing for several volatiles.
Councilman Marshall made the motion. Councilman Nguyen made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Ten D.
An ordinance granting to Waste Management of Texas, Inc., a Texas corporation, the right privilege and franchise to use the public rights of way to conduct a solid waste collection service business within the city of Missouri City, Texas, providing a term, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, and providing for several volatiles.
Motion.
Approval.
Second. Motion by Councilman Marshall, second by Councilman Emery. All those in favor? Motion carries. Ten E.
An ordinance granting to PCA Waste Corporation, a Delaware corporation, the right privilege and franchise to use the public rights of way to conduct a solid waste collection service business within the city of Missouri City, Texas, providing a term, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, and providing for several volatiles.
Move approval.
Councilman Smith and Councilman Marshall. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item ten F.
An ordinance granting to BFI Waste Services of Texas LP Delaware Limited Partnership DBA Republic Services of Houston the right privilege and franchise to use the public rights of way to conduct a solid waste collection service business for commercial customers within the city of Missouri City, Texas, providing a term, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, and providing for several volatiles.
Move approval. Second.
Councilman Marshall and Councilman Emery. All those in favor? David, I mean, two out of three, pretty good chance that the third one's going to pass. You don't have to come to that next meeting if you just don't want to, okay?
I love seeing you guys.
We love to see you.
I know.
This now move too.
All right.
Councilmember Smith asked a question that I'm sure is in the minds of everyone, why this is not on consent. Our charter does specifically require open readings for franchises and that.
Same reason I asked last time about why we do three instead of two. Same reasons. The ordinance, it's a charter. They didn't change that, did you? Scott, why didn't y'all change that on the charter? The requirement to have these suckers read three times. Y'all overlooked that one. Oh, you did? That's about all you must have done. Because Ejoy has probably talked y'all out of that. Yeah, okay. Ten G.
An ordinance in the city of Missouri City, Texas, amending city of Missouri City ordinance number O two fourteen, adopted March eighteen, two thousand and two, as amended, providing terms and conditions for employee political activity, providing for appeal, and providing for several volatiles.
This is a first of two reading ordinance. Is there a motion?
Move.
There's a second. Yes, sir. Need to explain this one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a request to amend the Personnel Policy Manual to provide clarification in terms of political activity for cities of employees, employees of the city of Missouri City. Essentially, we want to clarify what I would consider the overall behavioral expectations for all employee as it relates to political activity. So in front of you, we have what is a draft of a code of conduct associated with political activity, which, once an individual announces an interest in political activity or running for political office, in the city, we provide clarification in terms of the policy, behavioral expectations, and a written agreement that the employee, once he or she announces, that notifies the city manager and basically signs that agreement to establish a clear understanding as to his or her behavioral expectations.
It's more or less a code of conduct.
It is a, it is a code of conduct.
Well, let me ask you this. Let's, if that employee decided to run for political office.
I didn't hear the first part, sir.
And then, and he or she would need to send Ed a notice. And does that notice need to be approved? Or just a notice?
No.
No, it doesn't need to be approved.
No, it doesn't have to be approved. It's just a notice so that we're aware, that he's aware of it, we're aware of it. Then they do have to comply with our code of conduct while, while running for office. Doesn't prevent them from running for office. It just sets out some guidelines of how they behave when they're running for office.
So, so, so I guess, Edward, I guess, so this is not limiting any employee.
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. I mean.
Yeah, other than running for council. The, the ordinance does prohibit employee, city employees from running for city council.
Now, that's in the past. I mean, that's there already, right?
No, actually, there was no prohibition prior to the consideration of this ordinance in relation to city, city employees running for city council.
And what is that? What's the?
And remaining employee.
So they'll be terminated?
They will have to, in order to run for city council, they will have to resign their job in order to run for city council.
But for any other position that they're running for?
Any other political position they're running for, they do not have to resign. All they have to do is provide notice.
Let's word this on.
You know what's worded on, but we're not going to discuss that in an open meeting, I can tell you that.
I didn't want to call any names.
Well, but it will get to be a name deal if we continue with it, so.
All right, I'll yield.
We had, I know, we had this discussion prior to why we wanted this, and I think that's the best thing for both parties. Keep to policy.
Let me, let me just come in here.
For their protection as well as ours.
Real quick, on your code of conduct, which I'm strongly in, in support of it, but there's one here that says, make no personal comments about the city of Missouri City, City Council Board of Commission. I don't know how a person can comply with that.
Well, I think the intent there, unless you want to, I think the intent there is whenever an individual speaks in a political environment, it needs to be clear that his or her opinion is that of, it's not representing the city's position.
Then that's what it needs to say. This doesn't say that.
Okay.
That's what it needs to say.
And we have that right below, they're actually, for that one, it was not to speak ill of, or actually, if, if someone's running for office and they're asked a question about the city council, our preference is they don't give an answer. I mean, they, they, whatever office they should be, they shouldn't be giving an opinion about the actions of the city council.
I understand that. It just needs to be clear. That's all I'm saying. Now, the other part is, is that I won't support this ordinance because I think any employee, if they want to run against me, have at it. And, and I, I won't support it. And I won't support it even for the other reasons. I think the code of conduct sets some pretty high standards, that that person has to, one is notify you that they're going to run for office, two is they have to sign the code of conduct and then have to live by it. Then if they violate it, then they're subject to some form of disciplinary action up to and probably including discharge, I would assume, depending on the gravity of the situation. But I would not support telling any employee they can't run for city council.
So I guess in, in reference to the code of conduct, Ed, I understand that why it's important and with, I guess, one of the elections that we had in the recent, I think the code of conduct need to be re-reviewed and probably add some stuff to protect, you know, the city and protect the staff and protect whoever it is. But what came about running against city council?
Yeah, that's.
Why is that in here?
The reason for, well.
If I could say, there are some inherent conflicts with such a running in that city council appoints a city manager and the vast majority, of course, of the city employees are appointed by him. So we have a hierarchy of authority when someone is, is running for that position and some supervisory issues that can certainly come into play. For example, if, if council directs the city manager to start working on a certain course of action and an employee is running for council in contradiction, contradiction of such an action, we'll have an inherent conflict. And that is part of why that, that portion of the ordinance is being.
I have no, I have no problem if the person wins the election and resigns. And we can require that.
Yes.
But not, not to run.
Counselor, I would. I want them tarred and feathered.
I can understand that, but I mean.
Well, I don't think they could, if they got elected, they can't serve. They can't.
In, in anywhere.
Already there.
Because.
Correct? No, they can't get a salary either. And charter won't allow them to serve.
No. What, 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 with what you're saying is.
Can't be elected and be employed as well.
If an employee not running against council and when, but if, if, even if they run for another seat within the county or wherever it is and they win, they can't collect two paychecks. That's, that's also, right?
Yeah, they can't do that. Not called in Texas Constitution.
Correct. So I think that itself alleviates that issue.
I think the main issue is for council to consider the issue of a perceived versus an implied conflict of interest that an employee, and again, there are different ways of looking at it, but if an individual is running for office, there may be a perceived conflict of interest that may not be in the city's best interest. Again, you are the board, the, the one who makes the, the decision, and we'll certainly comply with your directives, but.
Yeah, these line items, man, I think it brought us on freedom of, make no personal comments about the city of Missouri City, City Council Board of Commissions.
And then I think to, to add to that.
We can fix that, Don.
Yeah, I know, but I just, I wanted to add my little two cents, Jerry.
Well, I mean, we fixed that about fifteen minutes ago.
By along the line with that, Ed, is if we have, the Charter Review Commission just presented the Charter Review today about term limits and in it where I read that they feel that at any time, and I'm not wording it exactly, but anytime anyone wants to outseat a council, they can. So there's no term limits needed. It's, it's, again, I, I go back with Mayor Proton Wyatt as to, I support the code of conduct and I don't support the, the employees running against the city council members.
And that, if that's the will of the council, that's the will of the council. I do say, though, that, as Caroline went into great detail on, it does cause a conflict of interest when city employees run for council. And consider that as.
How does that work elsewhere? I mean, they, we're not the only one city.
In most organizations, it's not allowed. No.
How about the ones that, that are?
And what do you mean, that are allowed?
The ones that are, that have, that don't have the restriction.
I don't have a problem if an employee want to give up their job to serve on city council. I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with them running. Didn't have a choice to make. Because they can't serve, they can't be, they can't serve on city council and be an employee.
Yes.
And that's where it should hit the, hit, that's the point that should be hit. That's what they need to know upfront. You know, you can run for this election, you win, you won't be, because this says you can't be on city council.
If they lose, and they badmouth us, they're going to lose their job too.
Well, that's in the code of conduct, the badmouth.
We got policies they have.
I know. That's what I'm saying.
Right. I mean, I, I, I think the code of conduct, again, was best reviewed, but, and where we put that, again, what the mayor was just talking about, if the person loses, they come back in badmouth, and that gives the staff an opportunity under the code of conduct to, if they violated any of those rules or regulations, to sit down with them and take the course of action where it needs to go.
And if they're that bad off, they probably going to be badmouthing us in the election, so we won't have to worry about it.
Yeah, they broke all the rules.
Mayor and council, if I could bring up a procedural issue. I believe there's a motion and a second on the table.
There is.
To adopt the ordinance as written. An option that council does have is for an amendment to be proposed to strike, I believe it's the first sentence.
I'll.
Strike the first sentence. There can be a vote on that amendment and then a vote on the motion as amended if that were to be successful, if that is so desired.
That's up to somebody if they were to do the amendment.
What did the first sentence say? Can you read that again, please?
Certainly. An employee of the city immediately forfeits employment with the city if the employee becomes a candidate for election to the city of Missouri City, City Council. That's the forfeit of employment section. The second section, second sentence, I apologize, is for the code of conduct for.
Okay.
The notification process.
The first sentence is, just eliminates the prohibition of a existing employee from running for city council. Doesn't change any of the rest of it, right?
Wait, wait. Where are you reading from, Caroline?
She's reading page two of two, under section one B candidacy.
Under candidacy.
See, just saying, strike that one piece.
So why don't we just remove B?
You take out the notification process at the same time if you take out, you take B totally.
Are we leaving the notification process?
Yeah, I think for sure.
So we start with prior to becoming?
Right.
Is what you're saying? Take, yeah, take that as one.
That's if somebody here makes an amendment to the current motion.
Well, I'm trying to, I'm going to do that once I get it figured out.
Okay, do.
I want to be accurate. So we start with prior to becoming?
That would be an option if council so desires, and that would remove the forfeit of employment for running for city council.
Okay, that's the amendment I, I would, would recommend.
Second.
Okay.
Now, let me ask you something else. Don't we need a C that says if the employee wins, they can't serve on city, can't serve, can't be an employee to city?
It, in reference to as far as the council, as we mentioned earlier, the charter takes care of that provision. And then regarding.
It doesn't hurt to put it in here as a second, an early reminder.
Charter covers employment, let me know. Another, another position being.
So does the audit.
Well, well, but, yeah, that's true. But the point of it, if you talk.
Our charter covers if someone's running for, for county office, they can't be a city employee?
That goes back into the references regards to the state constitution.
They can be a city employee. They have to decide on where they want to get their pay from.
Yes.
You can only collect one paycheck from the city or, or state.
That's what sent the.
There are a significant number of conflicts and not conflicts in that realm, and the attorney generals put together a, a good chart. I can make that chart available to give council an idea.
No, I'll just clarify what you're saying.
All right, so that's what we're covering.
My only, my only suggestion to the C is, is that it puts it all in one place. Even though it's in the charter, but here, if this, if this is what the person is operating with, it puts it right there. It tells them upfront. If they're making that decision, they'll run for council.
And I'd rather have an ordinance that says how many signs you can put up.
So you're saying, keep the B with the prior to becoming and then add a C?
Right.
Came a sign war.
Something wrong with having that there either.
Right there, right there, fresh and firm. They may just automatically change their mind when they see it.
Kind of like council. If you choose to run for another seat, you have to resign. You know that, don't you?
You got that.
Say what?
I said, you do know that, don't you? If you choose to run for another council seat, you have to resign the one you're in. That is in there.
On election day, you are dead in water.
Yeah.
You have that?
Let me read just briefly what I've drafted. Upon election to city council, an employee with the city of Missouri City forfeits employment with the city.
Good.
As of the date of election.
Do the movers and seconds accept that?
That has nothing to do with the movers and seconds. Y'all having amendment going on right now that we got to vote on?
But if you accept the amendment, we don't have to vote on it.
Well, then I'll say no. I'll say no, I don't accept it.
In order to preserve the, the original motion, if we, if, if council votes on this amendment and it fails, the original motion is still on the table.
Right. That's what I'm saying. We need to vote on that one for.
You'll vote on the amendment?
I did second, yes.
Hey, I have a motion and a second. But let's vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment?
Yep.
The amendment?
We need to read amendments back.
Read the amendments back again.
Certainly. And council, I'll certainly read this, and upon further reflection, staff may produce some, some tweaking to that language, but as, as, I will present both at the next council meeting. The motion to amend involves striking the first. Striking the first sentence under candidacy and adding a section C, which states, in, in principle, upon election to city council, an employee with the city of Missouri City forfeits employment with the city as of the date of election.
That's B and C.
Yeah.
Now, did we, we, we still.
Wait.
Wait, wait, before we vote. On this make no personal comments, we need to make a change to that.
Yes, we've already, we struck that from the code of conduct.
Oh, y'all going to bring this back to us?
Yes, for the second, yes, second read.
Motion on the amendment. Motion by Councilman Wyatt, second by Councilman Ellencat. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Now, on the original ordinance, there was a motion by Marshall and a second by Emery.
Which is for the code of.
As amended.
As amended. All those in favor of that? Motion carries. All opposed? Okay. Thank you. People just knew how to behave, we wouldn't be doing this. Eleven A is consider a resolution, city of Missouri City amending the utility schedule of fees.
Move it, Don.
Second.
Councilman Wyatt made the motion. Councilman Nguyen made the second. Motion carries. Thank you, Sharon.
Way to go, Sharon.
She's good.
You should have presented Ed's, eleven B. Consider resolution, city council, selecting a representative and an alternate to the Houston Galveston Area Council twenty thirteen General Assembly, selecting a representative and an alternate.
I've been on the representative for the past three years, and I would like to continue in their position.
Are you making the motion?
I suppose so. Do I need to do both or?
Uh, we can do both, right? But it says selecting a representative and an alternate, so they can be in one motion? The representative and.
He's made a statement expressing his interest.
He's asking if there was a motion, and he says it is.
Yes.
But I'm asking, does it have to be separate, the representative and the alternate, or one motion?
We do need, we do need one vote on this item.
No, no.
As we have one resolution.
What are you saying? Can he make one, one motion to nominate the two people?
Certainly. One motion to nominate the two people. Correct.
How we clear about that?
Yes.
Okay.
I, as a member, Floyd, as the.
I cheerfully accept.
But do you cheerfully second?
And I cheerfully second.
Well, you know, I mean, I, I, I mean, I, I saw information going on around about this. I mean, I'm not that hung up over this, over this, over this position, but I, I, I was certainly hoping somebody would make the motion other than, than you.
I was making a comment at first. I was simply asking the question. I, I had hoped someone would make the motion too.
Well, I make the motion.
Mayor, since this position is. Mayor, since this position is appointed by council, we are pre-appreciated, at least we got some reported from this member. Because so far, I don't think that we have had any.
There was one at the last meeting, Danny. Y'all have got to lis, y'all have got to listen when this man makes his report from HDAC. He's made them after every meeting he has attended.
What even, every meeting? I don't think so. Do you have any record that he make any formal?
Yes.
Email?
Report? I don't, I don't think so, Mayor.
How many times have you reported on your?
Oh, I don't, to clarify, I don't do it after every meeting, it's a monthly meeting, but I, but I do report any time that the city has any-
But you should report it to our council, not only to Mayor, I mean, we're entitled to that, Mayor.
No, no, he has made the reports here in his council, Danny. I don't know where you've been. He has made reports that affect the city of Missouri City at this council meeting.
You know, what I would suggest to, to, for clarification, just for clarification purposes-
Do we have any records of that, Maria? I mean- Very low, yeah.
Just for clarification purposes in the future, agenda the item, and then it's documented, and then we-
That's right.
We, we'll know.
I can also forward, I mean, if I'm re-appointed, I can forward the entire agenda to everyone on council, they'd like to know, to know exactly what was spoken, the minutes of the meeting.
You know, this is going back to what Mayor Porton Wyatt and Councilmember Wynn was talking about, and also, and Councilmember Smith in the past, talking about, you know, under the section of council reports, or whatever the next section is, each opportunity member that's serving. I know Councilmember Smith has been a proactive about this, at, at times when we have people serving on committees, again, it's a lot of time commitment, it's, it's a lot of time of service that people do, but it's one to where, under council reports, and I know when he came back on second term, he was, you know, almost talking about how come councils doesn't give reports anymore, and I think this would be an opportunity for moving forward future, that we come up with under city council announcements or, or reports, give some type of report as to what it is, and if that can be added, you know, to the minutes so this way, if there are important discussions that took place, that one would come back and report, and we have those.
But it, it has to be, if that person's going to do that, then they have to contact the city secretary and put on the agenda exactly what you're gonna talk about. We can't just generally put it on there anymore.
Right, that's, and, and that's what changed this from open discussions to city council announcements, because under that state provision, if we're going to talk about something, it has to be agendoned, so if you have a committee report that you wanna bring to council, you need to let Maria know so that it is on the agenda. What that does, that gives the general public an opportunity to be here and hear that report that it could affect them. That's why it has to be agendoned.
And allow us to discuss it.
And allow us to discuss it. Otherwise, it's just a general announcement that we're gonna have a HOA meeting or something, so anybody who is, you know, chairing a committee, or even goes to some kind of a meeting, just like I scheduled the report on the Metro, and, and by the way, at the next council meeting, which is the 17th, the chairman of Metro will be here at six o'clock, as you all had wanted to visit with him.
Not on the agenda, Mayor.
It'll be on the, that will be on the agenda for that workshop.
Anyway, I move that we appoint Bobby Marsh and Floyd, Emory, as the alternate.
Huh? I said, I'm withdrawing my motion, mine was more of a comment.
Well, she never took it down anyway.
I never got that far.
And I'll withdraw my second.
All right, so I need a second then.
I second that.
But again, I think you all are all right, Danny's on the econo, he's chairing the economic development, as he does things out there, you know, let Maria know that you need to give a report like on your trip to Vietnam, we need to hear about that, schedule it, so that-
Yeah, not only, not only that, Mayor, I always inform, invite, and report. I think the council's-
But I will say this, in Bobby's defense, he has reported HDAC stuff before that has affected the city now.
Right, and that's what I wanted to clarify, that the HDAC is a legislative body, of which we are one seat of forty-five, and I'll be honest with you, ninety-eight percent of what they do does not affect Missouri City, and I tried to tell you about the two percent that does, so, if, but I would be glad to tell you the whole hundred percent if people are interested, if, and I'll do that by email, or whichever way that you want.
You don't have to tell us the whole thing, you know, whatever's coming, because, I mean, we expect to get some assistance from, I mean-
Well, the primary thing that the board votes on is approval of grants and so forth.
Yeah, exactly, that is important.
Well, I know, and, and, but it's, it's the, the last step, not the, the issuance, I mean, the, the application, it's the final step.
It is, and most of it deals with infrastructure-type stuff.
Absolutely, so, I'll be, I'll be glad to do more.
I know you're doing a good job of communicating to the mayor, but I thought, you know, we are entitled to be in-
Now, Danny, I mean, I, he doesn't even tell me one-on-one, I know that he has made comments before.
Mayor, I asked Maria to get me some, some track records of the last time that he did a report, yeah.
I don't think, yeah, all those in favor? I don't think what the last, what was the last grant we had that you talked about?
Oh, it was a hurricane act, a million dollars worth that we couldn't fix it already.
But we gotta, are we okay?
We do not have any closed items.
Now, we've gotta, we've gotta take, we can take 2C.
From special.
From this, from the special meeting.
You wanna close this meeting first?
Huh?
You wanna close this meeting first?
Yeah.
We through?
Yeah, we're through with this meeting.
Wait, wait, Mayor, so, the number twelve, item number twelve, something that the city council, council announcement, is that something that needs to be pre-posted?
Yes.
If it's specific, if it's general, if it's something real, general, maybe.
Well, if I just made an announcement about the four main mayor and councils meeting next month, that wouldn't have to be, but if you wanted to give a specific report on your committee, then yes, it needs to be agendoned, under that item, but agenda, report from Councilman Ellencat regarding, you know-
Mayor, how about the reception of the delegation from Shengdong? I mean, can we just make an announcement?
And you can talk about that.
Okay, without having been approved, is that correct?
I feel that we've gone into another topic here, that being the Open Meetings Act on community interest items, and I will be glad to forward-
'Cause there's conflict there.
And, and there've been several attorney general opinions, and there's been a-
Why don't you schedule, why don't you, uh, agenda an item to not only talk about the delegation, but your-
The inbound and outbound.
There you go. So you could, he could say, an economic development commission report from Chairman Wynn. Hey, that sounds, Chairman Wynn.
Maria, why don't you go ahead and put down a report for me?